Council, I think we'll get started if council wants to come sit down. Good afternoon and welcome to Fort Worth City Council Work Session. I will call us to order and turn it over to Jay Chapa.
Good afternoon. Today, we've got a few organizational updates and employee recognition, and I'd like to start with DJ Harrell with the Development Services Department to recognize La Monica Smith for receiving the Excellence Award from the Real Estate Council.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor Parker and Council, City Manager Chapa. Thank you guys for the opportunity to recognize city employee excellence today. As you guys know, being a public servant can sometimes feel thankless, especially if you work for permitting. So our partners at the Greater Fort Worth Real Estate Council recognized that, and since 2024, they've started giving one municipal award for excellence to an employee of Tarrant County, of a municipal government in Tarrant County. And so today I have with me Bowie Holland, and he wants to recognize one of our special employees with the Development Services Department.
All right. Thank you, DJ, Mayor, Council. Thank you so much for just taking a brief bit of time to recognize La Monica Smith. This was a hard decision. Y'all have a number of outstanding employees, but we did want to take time to recognize those on the front lines there that make Fort Worth such a wonderful and special city. I think particularly in light of some things we're seeing going on around Austin, around our state, development in Fort Worth is the envy of the rest of the state, and it's thanks to people like La Monica. Thank you very much, La Monica, for everything you do.
Very well deserved. And DJ, I know that you love, DJ, I know you love testifying in Austin, so we'll just send you back down there.
So much.
You've done a great job. We appreciate you.
Thanks, La Monica, for what you do, and Bowie, thanks for reaching out and recognizing our great employees. Next, I've got Jessica McAcrin to recognize National Public Works Week. Three months, I finally figured out how to say her name.
Perfect. All right. We've got some of our superintendents and supervisors with our TPW crew. They're going to come up and join us up here as well, right in front. And while they keep walking, I'm going to go ahead and get started to present this recognition. So today, we are celebrating the upcoming National Public Works Week, which we will observe this year from May 18 through May 24. The 2025 theme this year is people, purpose, and presence, and it captures exactly what makes our public works employees such a cornerstone of life here in Fort Worth. Our public works professionals are often behind the scenes, but their impact is front and center in our daily lives. From the roads we drive on, to the clean water we depend on, to the drainage and solid waste systems that keep our cities safe and clean. None of this would function without the dedication of our city engineers, our project managers, our field crews, and our staff. Their purpose is clear: to build and maintain the infrastructure that supports our growing and dynamic community. Their presence is felt every time we drive on a newly paved road, safely navigate a storm, which we know today, or see a construction crew working in the heat, the rain, the very early morning hours, or the very late evening hours. And most of all, it's our people. They bring professionalism, heart, and expertise to every project. The men and women of the city's public works departments are not only workers, they are problem solvers, innovators, and public servants committed to the well-being of Fort Worth. As we mark the 65th Annual National Public Works Week, I urge all residents to take a moment to recognize the vital role that our public works staff play in shaping our city's health, safety, and the quality of life. I'm joined here today, as you see, by our supervisors and superintendents of public works, but I'll note that this recognition of public works employees extends beyond our TPW crews. It includes all of our public works employees in other departments, including water and wastewater, and development services as well. To our public works employees, thank you for your service, your commitment, and your unwavering presence in our community. You are truly the backbone of the city of Fort Worth, and we are better, safer, and stronger because of you. Thank you for all that you do. Thank you, gentlemen, so much, and ladies, for being with us today. And I'll point out, Laine Zarate, you've all seen Laine many times. Laine is our Assistant Director, leading our street and stormwater operations.
Thank y'all very much for being here.
Tiana, thank you.
Thank you all for what you do. And Jessica gets to stay up for the next one.
Okay. So for our next one, thank you. We are going to come, we're going to be joined by our TPW Stormwater Team. They're going to come up as well. So this next recognition is absolutely fitting today, as all of North Texas is under a flood watch until this evening. Perfect. So Governor Greg Abbott recently proclaimed the week of May 19 through May 23 to be Flood Awareness Week in Texas. As we join Governor Greg Abbott and communities across Texas in marking this week, we want to encourage every resident, business, and organization in Fort Worth to learn about flood risks, consider insurance options, and prepare emergency plans. As we all know, the city of Fort Worth has faced more than its fair share of severe weather over the years. Flash flooding and hazardous road conditions have put lives at risk, damaged homes and businesses, and caused significant disruption in our daily lives. These events serve as powerful reminders that flood awareness and preparedness are not just seasonal concerns, they are year-round responsibilities. So that is why, back in 2006, the city of Fort Worth took a bold and necessary step by establishing the Stormwater Utility. The dedicated staff of the Stormwater Utility worked tirelessly to reduce flood risks through infrastructure improvements, public education, and regulation of development. Their mission, to protect people and property from the dangers of stormwater runoff, is a mission that safeguards us all. The city of Fort Worth is also a proud participant in the National Flood Insurance Program and the Community Rating System, giving our residents access to lower-cost flood insurance and encouraging stronger floodplain management practices. Flood mitigation measures and preparedness protect our neighborhoods, our economy, and our future. With a greater awareness and stronger community action, we can continue to build a Fort Worth that is not just reactive to flooding, but resilient in the face of it. So join me and a few of our dedicated Stormwater Team members, led by TPW Assistant Director Jennifer Dyke. Join me in recognizing the efforts of this team and thanking them for all that they do.
Councilor Beck, go ahead.
Thank you, Jessica, and thank you all for keeping us dry.
I just want to, as y'all are walking away, I just want to thank y'all so much. People don't realize the amount of work that you do to keep us safe. And as the councilwoman for District Nine, we have a lot of areas that are prone to flooding, and the way that you go out before each expected rain event to make sure that those drains are cleared and that everything's ready to go is greatly appreciated by me and by the residents of Fort Worth. So thank you for, really thank you so much for everything you do. It's a tremendous effort.
Got a few more of these. Midori Clark, our Library Systems Director, was here to recognize the National Library Workers Appreciation Day. And they're all color-coordinated today.
We are, and we wanted to wear our green to support other things that were happening in the city today, but come on up, everyone. I am so pleased and excited that Mayor and Council and our city manager have chosen to specially recognize our Fort Worth Public Library staff today. National Library Workers Day, which was April 8, is a time to recognize library professionals for their expertise and leadership skills in transforming lives and communities through education and lifelong learning. The day also reminds the public that library workers serve as community compasses that lead users to endless opportunities for engagement, enrichment, and development. You may know, our Fort Worth Public Library team served more than a million library visitors last year. They performed their service with a smile while helping patrons check out a record-breaking over four million books. They also help our friends and neighbors access free Wi-Fi, eBooks, and other digital content as well. I am so proud to be part of this library team, and I just want to say from the bottom of my heart and on behalf of the community, thank you all so much for the work that you do for your community. We're going to turn around and take a quick picture, and I just also want to mention that all of these folks who are here with us today, they represent all of our different libraries and branches, many of them under the direction of our incredible Assistant Director Michelle Gorman, and they were all selected to be here to represent our very large team. So I'm really proud of this group particularly as well.
Midori, that's not going to work. Yeah, you're going to, you're going to need to go to the front. There you go.
Okay, for our last two, we have Chief Davis coming up to recognize EMS Week and also take care of Firefighters Appreciation Day. So EMS Week.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Jim Davis, Fire Chief, and it is my privilege to talk to you a couple minutes here briefly about Sunday, May 4, was International Firefighters' Day. It is a recognition of a day in which public safety professionals in the space of the firefighting profession were recognized nationally. So I call your attention to that. And then the week of the 19th, here, week after next, is National Emergency Medical Services Week. And today, I'm privileged to be in front of you with a combination group of the Fort Worth Fire Department and MedStar, as we are 55 days out from formalizing our relationship and our unity as one organization with one mission. So I thank you for this special recognition, and I just want to thank these folks here today, because every one of them have been an instrumental part of being teammates, coming together as one organization, and doing it with a high level of professionalism every day in the community, but even more so right now, working together holistically to provide good service to this community in support of you and the residents of your districts, so, and guests. So again, thank you very much, and I thank every one of these folks. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you all, and thank all of you involved in the mergers we're going forward. We're making good progress, and we're on time, and everything seems to be going well. So thank you. That's all for organizational updates. You want me to move to informal reports?
Yeah, to IRs.
Informal reports. The first one, we have 250059. It's a contract with the Marilla Group for contracted chief communications officer, and Bethany Warner's here to answer any questions.
Questions. Councilor Beck?
I just, and you might be able to answer this while Bethany's on her way up. We've talked about how the changes to the department, within that department is also community engagement. And so I just want to make sure that we're not touching any of the community engagement positions that we currently have.
The community engagement piece will remain. There might be some shifting of positions around, but the goals will still be the same, that they're providing the same service.
Right now, we each have a liaison for our districts that are...
That'll remain, having liaisons, yes.
No questions? Yes. Councilor Bivens?
One thing that came about, and I know I'm not here, but one thing that came about was we learned community engagement workers were no longer proactively attending neighborhood association meetings. They were coming if we requested, but nobody told us to request. And so will that be a natural function that they take back?
I'm not sure, but with the reorganization and the retraining, the exact, I couldn't answer you directly what that, if they're going to be just showing up, or if nothing else, we'll make sure that the neighborhood associations know to invite them if they want them to attend.
That's key, because how can you engage if you're not engaging?
Right.
I was very upset when I learned that they weren't coming unless I told them to come.
And I think it's going to be a function of the actual neighborhood association. So having more communication with them, so that if they want the city to engage, then we can be there.
Thank you, sir.
I do have something. Bethany, do you have the actual presentation with the chart?
Yes, I have the attachment to the IR printed in front of me.
The one that we...
With the org chart?
Yes.
It's on page 10 of the attached report to the IR.
Can you just briefly go over that chart?
Sure, absolutely. So in the reimagined organizational chart for the Communications and Public Engagement Department, you're going to see a lot of the same functions that you know and appreciate about the department, which is customer care, think My Fort Worth, and 3-1-1, which is now over the leadership of Assistant Director Sharon Gamble.
Are we able to put that chart on the screen? We don't have it. Okay.
And then you're going to see the, a new division called SHOP that brings together the existing services around putting out information, your photo, your video, your digital components, your web, and then bringing that alongside that customer, or the resident engagement team that Councilwoman Beck was speaking of. All of that pulled together into one, oh, I see you working there. All of that pulled together into one division to help them more efficiently work through requests across the city and from council members. The newest addition to this organization is that there's going to be a vertical dedicated to media outreach, strategic communications, and crisis communications, led by a lead PIO. So again, a lot of the functions that you know about the Communications Department, but organizing them a bit more succinctly around customer care, strategic output, and then crisis communications, and proactive media relations. And then I think they might be able to put this on the screen for you.
While they're doing that, I'll say congratulations to Sharon Gamble. I didn't know she had made that promotion. So congratulations to Sharon.
Yes, we're glad to have her doing it.
So that was one of the reorganization pieces that I put together.
You know she's a lead candidate. Did you know that?
Oh, I do.
A promotion here.
Is that what you needed, Councilor Nettles?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Bethany. Any other questions for Bethany? Great.
Thanks, Bethany. Our next IR is on the Police Chief Recruitment Process, and Victor Scolado, HR Manager, is here to answer any questions.
Questions from council?
I think it'd be good to have a review of the process.
Victor?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, City Manager Chapa. So just to go over the general process for the recruitment, we met with Mosaic Public Partners about a month ago, along with ACM Johnson, Indiana Giordano, to kind of go over the initial steps of the process. We, at that point, engaged with different stakeholder groups and now invites, to invite them to stakeholder meetings that took place last week, starting on Wednesday. Wednesday was for Mayor and Council, and then Thursday and Friday was for internal stakeholders and external groups that wanted to come in and meet with Mosaic Public Partners to kind of go over, just to get their feedback and input into the recruitment. Currently, at this point, we are finalizing the brochure, and that's going to be going live tomorrow. And it'll be open for about four to six weeks, which at that point, once the posting closes, Mosaic will meet with us again to present their list of most qualified candidates. And then we'll kind of start at that point, just to schedule semi-finalist interviews, and then finalist interviews, which are targeting July, and then with an onboarding plan and selection for August, with the appointment in September.
Excellent. Thank you so much for your service and for this overview. Will you send Council, once the brochure is ready, a copy of the brochure?
Yes, we're working with Bethany's group and team to kind of provide y'all some marketing material that you can use on your social media pages and newsletters to kind of broadcast that out.
Before it goes out?
Yes.
Okay, great. Great clarification. Obviously, public engagement is something that's really important for District 6. And so although I may not be here in July, I will be here for the public engagement meetings, because it still impacts my family and our community. And so I would love to get more insight, if you could share at this time, what public, what that public engagement looks like.
Yes, we're planning to do an open forum to, with the top finalist group. It'll have an opportunity for questions with each of those candidates. And then after the more broader forum session, then we'll have time for the community to kind of meet individually with the finalists, to kind of just have the one-on-one questions that they want to bring up to those candidates.
Great. That's all my questions. Thank you again.
Let me jump in here and say something about the community engagement piece. And I know we do it better here in Fort Worth than our East partners, but one of the things that Dallas did do in the process of hiring their city manager, and if I'm not mistaken, their police chief, is they had an opportunity where residents could come and just chat with the individual one-on-one.
Yes.
And then as well as have an open forum where they sat down and they answered questions. So I really want to see something like that, where it's not completely formal, but it's informal as well, that you can kind of actually talk to the candidates one-on-one.
Yes, that'll take place after the more public forum, and we'll have some time set aside for that one-on-one opportunity. Thank you.
Any other questions, Council? Yes, ma'am.
I have a specific suggestion, Victor. Not only you can do this, and I'm glad Councilmember Nettles mentioned that. It's good to have this out at the front end of the process. You might even consider a district rolling town hall meeting, because many people can get to City Hall, but many people cannot. And so just keep that in mind.
Definitely.
Anyone else? Thank you, Victor.
And the last IR is proposed council-initiated zoning changes for certain properties along North, South, and West Normandale Street between Loop 820 and Las Vegas Trail to MU1 Low Intensity Mixed Use Zoning District in Council District 3.
That's a lot of words.
Councilwoman Crane?
Yes, who's, is it Lachandra who's here?
Yes, Lachandra.
One down. Just briefly tell us what we're doing here.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So the proposal that is before you is for a council-initiated rezoning for properties that are in the Las Vegas Trail area, really between, on the west side of Cherry Lane, east of 820, just south of 830. And what we're doing, those properties are developed with apartment complexes, for the most part. There are a few neighborhood commercial centers throughout. And the idea is that we would be rezoning these multifamily properties to mixed use, so that they could have, and the mixed use would be MU, so that they would be more pedestrian-oriented friendly, and then also be able to accommodate some commercial on those existing sites that you currently see as multifamily.
Great. Thanks for all your work. I just wanted to point out, this is upzoning, so we're giving more property rights to the property owners.
That is correct.
Right. And I appreciate y'all's work researching this, and we're looking at the west half of Las Vegas Trail to start with. The east half will come along a little later, because it sits in the JRB.
Yes, correct. We're going to start some conversations with the Air Force Base Personnel.
Great. Thanks for your work. I just wanted to say, this is sort of the last pillar of the LBT revitalization plan. We've invested in our safety there, education, health and family well-being, the economic development, and this is the housing piece, which should, per IR, bring more diverse housing options, maybe affordable options, and other options to exist there, right?
That is correct.
Great. Well, I appreciate the work on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just have a couple of questions, and I'm sorry, I tried to look through our code before asking these questions, but just having lived through this and in other areas in the city, I think, under MU1, are there, are there any restrictions on the type of businesses that can go into that ground floor, like things like liquor stores, vape shops? There's just been so much effort spent on revitalizing this area. I understand it's an upzoning, but that upzoning allows certain types of uses that maybe weren't already allowed, and so what I don't want to see is us have the opportunity to regress?
Yes.
As you go through that.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, no, thanks for bringing that up, Councilwoman Beck. That's already part of it, that we will not allow, and it wasn't in here, non-neighborhood uses. So vape shops, whatever you want to put in there. But open to all ideas, and we're talking with the community too, of what they don't want to see in the area.
Yes, and MU1 actually would require the uses that you're talking about, to have CUPs, and those cod amendments were done actually right before I got to the city.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
That's all we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Next up are just changes, our updates from Council on memberships and boards and commissions. Any questions on zoning cases on the upcoming dockets, or questions on the MNC log that you have in your packet? Okay, then we'll move straight into our first presentation, which is a Crime Lab update by Chief Neil Oakes.
Mayor and Council, Neil Oakes, Chief of Police, very proud to be for the city of Fort Worth and the Ford Police Department. I first want to thank you for giving us an opportunity to come today to give you an update, and our community an update, on where we stand with the backlog of the sexual assault kits that we spoke about several months ago. Seeing how this will likely be my last presentation before you as Chief of Police, I am very proud to let you know, as to not bury the lead, we've completely eliminated the backlog, and we are in 100% compliance with the state's 90-day requirement for completion of the testing, review, and entry of these kits into CODIS. I thank you for your support in all the resources and support we needed for the Crime Lab to be able to do their job. I'm thankful for the partnerships with some of our outside partners who played a part, and I am extremely proud of the team at the Crime Lab, including Tracy Sisko, our Crime Lab Director, and her team, who completely worked hours and hours and hours to make this happen. I would like to have them stand just for moments so they can be... so they can be recognized. Thank you, ladies. And that is not the whole team. We still have work to do at the Crime Lab, but we thank them for their work as well. All right. I do know how to work this new one. Same as the old. All right. As we said the first time we spoke about this, the thing that hurt the most for us, and I think for everyone around this table, was the way this affected those who had been negatively affected by the crimes of sexual assault and their loved ones. What we hope, with this completion of catching up with the backlog and making sure we never get there again, is that we build some of that trust and that confidence back and let those survivors know that we are completely committed to seeking justice, to fulfilling our responsibility with their cases and helping them with their recovery process. So a little bit of a backstory. We'll go over where we were initially when we started. We'll talk about what we have done to this point and what we are going to do going forward. So October 11th, 2024, we had 898 sexual assault kits that had been tested, but were waiting for CODIS entry, the Combined DNA Index System. About a week later, we had 190 more kits that were sent out. During the timeframe from when they were sent to when they returned while waiting for entry, those 190 also went over the 90-day requirement. The reason for the backlog was not lack of professionalism on the part of the people in the Crime Lab, it was lack of personnel. We have seven positions in the Crime Lab for forensic scientists to enter DNA. Only two of those were filled. When you have two people doing the job of seven, it just doesn't work. Some of the key things we did, we had performance-based bonuses for those scientists as they reached certain benchmarks in the backlog reduction process. When we looked to hire those five empty positions, we had a $5,000 sign-on bonus for those new analysts. We also had an 8.5% pay raise for those new scientists as well as the ones who were already in place. Not only did that help with retention, that also made us more competitive from a recruiting standpoint. When it came to the large number of kits that needed to be tested, we decided to streamline things. We reached out to Tarrant County District Attorney's Office. We took a hard look at the cases. And quite frankly, some of those cases already had a suspect who had pled guilty. Those didn't have to be prioritized as much where we're still, the ones where we're trying to identify a suspect. We also found that 180 of the kits that were in the pipeline were for property crimes. Please understand, we know property crimes are important as well, but we will always prioritize these sexual assault kits over our property crimes. When it came to the staffing shortages, we did hire five scientists to fill the five vacant positions. One of those did not work out. We're in the process of filling that one as well. The posting closed recently. HR has those applicants' information. They're reviewing those, and we should have our interviews within the next couple of weeks. What I think is important to point out here is, don't look at it as we lost somebody. What I want you to realize is we're only retaining the best. We're not just trying to fill seats in our Crime Lab. We want the best people we can possibly get in our Crime Lab. All of those current new hires are going through the testing right now, and all of them came with experience, so their training is going very well. We also were able to secure multiple grants, one being a $686,000 federal grant. It's an annual grant we apply for. We did win that award this year. And thank you to this group. We had a $349,000 addition to that to help with the testing, the outsourcing of these kits. But also for our benchmark study, we'll talk more about in just a little bit. And those $349,000 came from CCPD. Partnerships were huge. Two main partnerships with the Texas Department of Public Safety and the Tarrant County Medical Examiner's Office. The Crime Lab in Austin for DPS agreed to take 50 of our cases. And when they took those 50 cases, they took the entire case. From ownership of the case to testing to review and CODIS entry, so they took the cases completely. Also, with the Tarrant County Medical Examiner's Office, they agreed to take up to five new cases. So if any new cases came in, they would take up to five of those, which allowed our scientists in-house to focus just on the backlog. As we discussed last time, I know it was very important to this group. It's our communication and our compassion for the victims and survivors that we're serving when we investigate these cases. So we are having our detectives reach out. They already reached out to anyone who was affected by the backlog, explained the situation, what we're doing going forward. And we actually have a policy in place now that if, at any point, there's a delay in the testing, a detective will reach out, let that victim know, and they will note that in their case file. When it came to communications, we made sure we had one point of contact for the media, so we had consistent communication. We completed some interviews with the media about the backlog. We made updates available to the community on our website because we want to be very transparent about the process. We had weekly updates that we gave to OPAM and the City Attorney's Office, as well as frequent updates to our city leadership. Here's what we're looking for in the future. I talked about the $349,000 in CCPD funding. $100,000 of that is going to go to a company called FACT, forensic analysis, consulting, and training. They are going to conduct a study of our Crime Lab, look at our policies, our processes and our procedures, make sure we're doing everything the way we need to, and make sure we're following best practices. Eventually, we're going to transition to fully in-house testing with all of these kits. We are going to continue to outsource until all of our new employees are tested and they have passed all the quality assurance standards. After the certification, we're going to make sure that we have one of our forensic scientists handle a case from beginning to end so we're more efficient, we're more accountable, and we're on top of the job. Quick summary. As of April 15th, 2025, and I must point out and give all credit to the Crime Lab personnel, they finished a couple of weeks early. It was not an easy deadline they were given. We had to be realistic about the amount of work that had to be done, but we made it hard because we knew we could do it. We had to prove to you we could do it, prove to the community we could do it, and we had to prove to ourselves that we could. And they did so well. Our strategic partnerships, our staffing solutions, process improvements, a rock-solid team at the Crime Lab, were all instrumental. And moving forward, we're going to make sure everyone sees that we are committed to maintaining that compliance that we have achieved, continuing to improve our efficiency, and ensuring justice for our victims. I could not be more proud of the work that's being done. I also understand it is a battle we never should have had to fight. We never should have been in this situation. But once we put the team on task, they performed like true professionals, and I could not be more proud of the work they have done and the work I know they will continue to do going forward. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilwoman Flores?
Chief, I don't have any questions for you. I think I'm pretty clear on your presentation, and I am relieved, you know, that we've reached this point. What I do want to say, and I'm trying to apply perhaps maybe a lesson learned, and I think you and I had spoken about this, when it comes to cold cases, right? I don't want to refer to them as a backlog, but they are, by their very nature, cases that have had no additional leads, right? They are in the state they are for that reason. But is there regular communication by Fort Worth PD to those families, to those, you know, folks that are waiting to get some kind of indication, perhaps, if possible, where they are?
Absolutely. The unfortunate thing is oftentimes, there's not much new information to give. But we have directed the detectives, and we have added an additional detective to that unit to make sure they're communicating with the family members who are reaching out for information. I do want to point out one thing. There's also been someone, one of our fingerprint analysts, who seems to be absolutely incredible. We've been going back and reviewing fingerprints and other things, re-reviewing evidence. And she's actually been able to make some progress on cases that we had not had progress on in quite some time. So what I want our families to know is, we're not just sitting on our hands. We're trying everything we can. Sometimes evidence is there, sometimes it's not. But if it is, we're going to find it, and we're going to use it.
That's good to hear. And maybe as a future agenda item, I'll bring that up whenever it's, you know, time for police to report something. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Well, Chief, I almost called you a short timer, but it's such a very important topic, I'll refrain. I never will forget when the reporter asked me, or rather, told me how long these cases had been backlogged. That, it was not a "got you" moment because I knew when I told her we'd take care of it, I was relying on you. And I had the confidence that you would do what it took to get it done. The message was clearly communicated. I appreciate the way you did what needed to be done to get this handled. What I would suggest to you is the single point of media contact will serve you well, or your department well, not just in this issue, but any other issue. Because they call council members only when there is no response, you know, somewhere else. And so I think this has been a blessing in disguise in terms of coordinating responses. And I hope you can continue, or the department continues to have that type of dialogue with victims because there will be future victims. But if they know that there's a police department waiting to be of support, you know, they will continue reaching out. So it's a good note for you to leave on. Congratulations, but more importantly, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. I appreciate it. And if I am a short timer, I guess I'm a good company.
Chief, first of all, thank you for owning this and owning the problem. And I wanted to give kudos to you and your staff for stepping up and getting this done. I know this wasn't easy, and it was a big challenge. You got it done ahead of the schedule that was laid out before you. But I want to tell you thank you because I know it was a big lift publicly. And your staff has done a great job, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
I'm going to echo what all the other women around this table have said, and that's thank you for putting, thank you for addressing this. Thank you for making it a priority and really getting out there, not just correcting the backlog, but the way that you communicated with the victims of these crimes so that they knew exactly where they stood was also a big part of this. But I don't want to go unnoticed because that, I think, was key in helping us repair the trust that had been broken between the city of Fort Worth and those victims. So thank you for that. Thank you for clearing the backlog. It's truly appreciated. It was a bad day for Fort Worth to, when we got that news. So thank you for making us proud of our city again. The issue was twofold, and I think Mayor Protim hit on it in her comments. We had the backlog, but then we did not have a friendly dialogue with media. And that's some feedback that I've received on numerous occasions. And so I think the work left to do in this is how we improve our interaction with media in the PIO shop moving forward so that we see them as a partner in helping us, helping keep us accountable, but also helping us get out good news stories, too.
Thank you, Councilmember.
I would concur. You know, we had talked about this when NBC 5 investigates did their original story, that I've always worked with Scott Friedman Haff for over a decade and found him to be very professional and someone that does his research. And that was obvious in this case. But rather than cower, after those first few interviews didn't go the way we probably should have, you guys took the challenge on, and Tracy and your entire team, way to go. I know this was very difficult. I hope maybe it's a good lesson for the rest of the state and the country because I know that crime labs across the United States have been facing similar backlogs. Luckily, the state of Texas has now, for over a decade, considered this a priority. So we just need to continue to keep up. And for other departments, while your department may not have something that rises to this occasion, maybe it's a good lesson of it is healthy to raise your hand in, you know, in the hierarchy of the city management office to say, "I need help." And what we're doing right now, from a staffing perspective, is not working. And so I hope now that Tracy's team is fully staffed, we don't have to get to that point before. But also to HR for stepping up, Deanna and your team for recognizing that more resources need to be put in to help the police department be successful here, I think is also worth noting. So thank you, Chief Nokes. We appreciate you. This is definitely worth celebrating. And to carefully communicate to the victims and their family members that we're listening and we're doing things differently because of the problem that we were made aware of, I think is a testament to who we are as Fort Worth. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Council, we'll move to our next presentation. Thank you, Chief Nokes. Next up is an update on special districts by Dana Bergdoff.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate this opportunity. And certainly, Chief Nokes is a very hard act to follow. So pleased to update you on special districts. These are primarily within our ETJ and also our planned service areas. So I'll walk through these with you because we'll have some council action coming up in the next several weeks that we want you to be prepared for. So we'll cover what these special areas are. We'll talk about the existing districts, what our goals are, what the proposed districts are. And then also touch on a requested capital PID in our city limits. And then lay out these next steps for council action. So you all know what the ETJ is. It's the territory that extends five miles out from our city limits where we don't butt up against another municipality. It's currently about 262 square miles. It was about 350 square miles when I started with the city about 25 years ago. And so part of that is us releasing ETJ proactively, working with other adjacent communities like Northlake and Justin. But it's also, in some cases, us releasing ETJ, not necessarily proactively, but reactively due to the state law that changed in 2023, allowing individual property owners to release from our ETJ. So that guides some of the policy work that we're bringing for you today. The reason the ETJ is important is because we're the fastest-growing large city in the country. This allows us to plan for growth. It allows us to have our master thoroughfare plan. It allows us to lay out our water and wastewater networks and to incorporate those standards into our subdivision ordinance, which is the authority we have within our ETJ. And we work with our partner counties in order to have that authority to regulate growth and land development within the ETJ. That's also the area where property owners can ask for the city to consider annexation. So the ETJ is important to us. And then within that, because the ETJ is so large, internally, we worked with our Fort Worth lab, the Water Department Development Services and others to identify areas within the ETJ that we've termed planned service areas. They're adopted within our comprehensive plan. That tends to be the driver of that decision, but also ultimately with adequate transportation networks and public safety services. So, you'll see in blue those areas that are identified as planned service areas. Now, a good chunk of that is within our water service area, our CCN, but some of it is outside that. And so, these are areas where we anticipate or have had property owners work with water supply districts like Aqua Utilities or others to buy them out and for the city to then serve those areas. And that's particularly true along the State Highway 114 corridor to the north. But these planned service areas are those areas that, again, we give priority to by policy for considering annexation and also for providing water service. And it's that latter part that's important, given the ETJ release law. So, here's a map of our CCN. It, of course, covers our city limits and then a good portion of our ETJ. You'll see where it generally butts up against Parker County on that, on that west side, going further west with Walsh Ranch and also the Morning Star Development, and then goes south down to Johnson County, north up into Denton and Wise County as well. The CCN is just a little bit smaller than those planned service areas at 79 square miles. And that's where the city both has the right and also the obligation to provide water service. And so, that's important, because the state expects us to provide water service to those areas. And we've certainly heard some state senators and others say that we, they expect us to provide that service, whether that property is within our ETJ or not, and whether we might ever be able to annex it or not. And the reason that's important is because city water is what enables urban development. That's what enables 50-foot single-family lots and the, and the accompanying commercial schools and other development around it that really is urban. And that's a concern for us if we're not able to annex, if we're not able to at least have agreements with property owners to annex, because over time, those properties are going to be occupied by residents and businesses that are going to be served by the counties, right? They're going to need to be served by the sheriff. They're going to need to be served by emergency services districts, which in some cases may or may not have the paid staff or the professional staff, certainly don't have an ISO rating of number one, like the Fort Worth Fire Department and Fort Worth Development Services Department have helped us achieve within our city limits. So, that's a factor that we want to keep in mind with this discussion. So, what are these special utility districts? So, these are political subdivisions primarily that are created through state law, providing water, sewer, drainage, streets, and other services. The Texas Water Code provides them to provide for basically sanitary water. But they've evolved over time from what used to be primarily just water supply districts to now master-planned communities with urban densities. A lot of that started around the city of Houston and has grown into many communities throughout Texas. But they're just outside of municipal control, right? They're, they are not subject to city zoning and not subject to, obviously, land use in the county. So, why would developers request these special districts? Why would they want to create these special jurisdictions? Well, the, the, the goal is that it provides them with revenue for infrastructure, particularly off-site infrastructure, to extend water and sewer lines, and in some cases, street networks, to get to the districts that they're creating. So, why that's important is, as you think about our Fort Worth Builders Association, you think about a real estate council, when you have these special districts, that's a financing tool that those developers have that gives them revenue in addition to normal lot sales during the normal development process. So, it's a bit of a competitive advantage, arguably, for folks to be able to have these special districts and have that special financing tool for infrastructure that we don't have within our city limits. The developers then obtain city water and sewer to support that urban development, and then the owners do not pay city property taxes. So, they're able to assess their own tax in lieu of a city tax in order to collect revenue to pay for the debt for that infrastructure. And typically, these districts are created for about 20 to 30 years, and they maintain all of that public infrastructure throughout the life of the district. So, in some cases, this can actually work out okay if we're in a position where we're not actually ready to serve, particularly with, with, say, public safety services, that those, those areas can develop, and we're not required to respond with, with police and fire for some period of time. But that's a, that's a question, and that's something that's a, a policy issue for us to consider. So, we do have a number of existing districts. There's about seven development areas that have been created over the last 20 years. You'll see up at the top, we've got Tradition, Brookfield, Shale Creek, and Alpha Ranch, generally along the State Highway 114 corridor west of, west of the Speedway. Then, those were all created in roughly 2005, 2006. That's the, they've got that lighter color. Just south of that is the Far North or North Star Municipal Utility District that was created in 2015, and that provided funding for an east-west arterial to connect Cinderella Ranch Boulevard west to 287. So, that was one of the reasons the council was willing to consider creating that district. And then further southwest, you'll see Live Oak Creek. That's also been called Haywire Ranch. That's west of, west of White Settlement, excuse me, west of Loop 820 along White Settlement Road. And a portion of that on the south has, has developed into residential development. And then southwest of there is, is Morning Star. And so, that was developed in a couple of phases, and as recently as 2021, expanded fairly significantly. And so, that's all of the, those are all of the special districts that have their own boards. They're not subject, you know, to, to city council or county oversight. But we, the good news is, we have agreements with all of them to have the option to annex if we want to, once the debt's paid off and those districts are fully developed. And then the counties, though, provide the services in the interim for public safety. So, our goals, given the fact that we don't have a lot of leverage with regard to our ability to annex or to retain ETJ, our goal is to work with developers within our planned service areas to provide them with water and sewer, but in exchange, to retain our ETJ, retain our platting and infrastructure authority, retain that option for future annexation, and then ideally, obtain a mix of lot sizes, commercial uses, school sites, have construction of arterial streets, obtain open space, obtain park dedication. That latter part's important, because we don't actually apply our park dedication policy within the, the ETJ. It currently only applies, and I believe can only apply, within our city limits. So, that's an important objective for us to, to build on the Good Natured Initiative that we talked about earlier. We can also obtain the, and ask for that their assessment rate or their tax rate be significantly higher than the city's. We've often set that at $1 per $100 valuation. The benefit of that is they're able to pay off their debt a little bit more quickly, but then they're also able to create a capital replacement reserve. And then lastly, for residents, at the time we might consider annexation, they're able to get a lower overall tax stack or tax rate when they move, move into the city limits, right? So, our, our rate is significantly below $1, which is, which should be a benefit. And then lastly, we're asking that we, that they limit their eminent domain authority, because, again, these are quasi-jurisdictions. They do have eminent domain authority, that they limit that just for the purpose of acquiring easements or right-of-way for infrastructure, and also that they can't expand their boundaries without consent from the city and the county. So, these are our goals, and this is something that we, we think is, is about the best we can do in terms of working with property owners, given the, given our obligations. So, what we're bringing to you today are some special districts proposed along the Bonds Ranch Road corridor and Peden corridor up in far northwest Fort Worth. And I'll talk here in a minute about our partnership with Tarrant County. But what you'll, you'll see there are four districts, starting on the west along Morris Dido. That's the extension, for those who may know Boat Club Road, that heads up north. So, that's the Centurion, was called the Shealan Track. They're calling it now the Estates at Eagle Mountain. So, that is proposed as a capital PID, but this would be a Tarrant County capital PID. Second, to the east is PMB. That's proposed to be a freshwater supply district that would convert to a water control improvement district. Number three to the east is a third developer, Green Brick. That would also follow the same path as PMB. And then just to the north of Peden, up towards Tinsley Park, the property that I believe Councilmember Blaylock mentioned earlier is our community park we just acquired, is Shelton Ranch, and Green Brick is the developer for, for that tract as well. They've also initially requested a municipal utility district, but I believe are willing to consider a freshwater supply district. The reason that's important is that the state can create the municipal utility districts, but the county has the authority to create the freshwater supply district. And we like that, because having the county at the table helps us get to the table, which helps us negotiate for the infrastructure and for those goals that we want to see. So, the city partnership with Tarrant County along Bonds Ranch Road. So, thanks to Tarrant County, to Commissioner Ramirez, to the, to the county staff for working with us. So, as I mentioned, they have the authority to both create public improvement districts and freshwater supply districts. Those, just as a technical note, the freshwater supply districts convert to water control and improvement districts, like we have along 114, for the authority to construct drainage facilities. That's, of course, important for all of us, as we've talked about the importance of stormwater and drainage today. With this authority, Tarrant County has helped negotiate with the developers for larger lots, mix of lot sizes and land uses. Tarrant County is also generously funding $30 million out of their bond program for design to widen Bonds Ranch Road. And of course, the city is considering a bond program proposal to help match that. Next, the proposed special districts would fund the construction of the adjacent portions of Bonds Ranch Road, so that would not come out of the, the city bond program. And then lastly, the city cog and text out are planning to fund construction for portions of Bonds Ranch that are outside of those adjacent districts. So, great partnership there, a lot of moving parts that we're all, we meet weekly to coordinate on. So, number one, Centurion. You, you should recognize this before, this was about a year ago. This came to you for the creation of the Tarrant County Capital PID. That was created a year ago with city council consent, about 836 acres. You'll see there's a nice mix of lot sizes, some that are about three-quarter acre, down to about 15,000 square feet. There's commercial at the arterial corners. There's a school site. There's open space, about 163 acres of open space parks and detention, and then, of course, the, the rights-of-way for the streets. So, that is created, and we're finalizing the development agreement for that one right now. Next is PMB Bonds Ranch. This is the one directly to the east, about 335 acres. The, Tarrant County has created this district with city consent. We, the city council consented at the end of January. The county created it in March. And again, you'll see there's a, a good mix of lot sizes, commercial tract, and also property for potentially a public facility that could be an emergency services facility or other facility to be determined. Next is Green Brick. This is the third developer to the east. This is again on Bonds Ranch. They've got about a similar acreage to PMB, very similar proposal. And again, all of the developers have agreed to coordinate on street connectivity and also, importantly, trail connectivity to connect green spaces and, and the schools. So, those are the, the proposals that we have to date along Bonds Ranch Road. And then further north, north of PMB and Green Brick sites, we've got the larger Shelton Ranch District. This is 850 acres, so large, similar to the Centurion development. We are still working with the county on the conceptual plan to see if we might add some more commercial uses at the arterial corners and to provide a better mix of, of residential options. So, but this one, again, is, is coming in for a proposed district within a planned service area within our water CCN. Lastly, I wanted to mention this district. So, on the south side of Bonds Ranch Road, this is within our city limits. The developer would like to create a capital PID that would be city-controlled, and they would, they're going to need a few waivers from our policy, but we think they can be defensible as long as we're able to secure the arterial construction that we need, both for their lanes of Bonds Ranch Road on the north, but also the full width of Sybalo Hills slash Eagle Mountain Parkway, that's the arterial that runs through their development east-west. So, they're evaluating that to see if they're, if they, if they're able to afford that with their development pro forma. But that would be something that would be coming to you at a later date. Here you can see the, the planned development. Again, this is within our city limits, already zoned. They're not asking for a zoning change. It's primarily single-family. There are two existing residential subdivisions that were built about 20 years ago along Bonds Ranch Road, larger lot developments. They, you may recall, they did a mix of, you know, 8.5, 8.75, 8.10 zoning to try to be more compatible with those larger lot developments. This PID that's being requested does not include the commercial tracks at the corners with Morris Dido and, and Bonds Ranch and, and Sybalo Hills. So, those would not be subject to public improvement district assessments. All right. So, proposed next steps, starting with Centurion. Again, this is the one furthest to the west, the Tarrant County Capital PID. We are targeting June 10th to ask for your authorization to execute the development agreement. The utility agreement, we believe, will come at a later date. Then, Centurion, the capital PID on the south. We're going to determine if we're comfortable with the waivers being requested. That would then come June 10th or 24th. Next, PMB, the Bonds Ranch District for freshwater supply that would be created by the county, May 13th. So, that's coming up just next Tuesday. So, this is the soonest action for you would be the city council authorization of that development agreement, and then at a later date, the other agreements, strategic partnership and utility agreements. And then lastly, Green Brick. So, the smaller development, the 320 acres on Bonds Ranch, that one, May 13th. We have a resolution consenting to creating the district. We anticipate the county commissioners' court would act in late May or early June to create that district, and then June 10th, come back with the development agreement. And then lastly, Shelton Ranch will work with the developer and the county to revise that conceptual plan. Assuming we reach agreement, then we would anticipate coming back to you for consent later in June. So, tried to rush through that, because I know it's quite a lot, but happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Dana, I'll just say, you've done an amazing job from the beginning. Was it last session or two sessions ago when all this really started? And you've navigated it really well alongside city staff. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Carlos.
Quick one, Dana, for Centurion and Rio Clado. You're requesting a capital PID eventually, right?
Correct. They've, they've requested a capital PID. They've sent us a list of waivers and a draft development agreement for our review.
Okay. With, with, again, something that the city's going to consider is working on those arterials, right?
Correct. Correct. You'll see, yes, I don't know that I can, if I can point it out on the, with the mouse, but yeah, just here on the south, this, this east-west arterial here, that I believe they're going to call Eagle Mountain Parkway, we'd like them from the, the eastern limit of the capital PID, we'd like them to fully construct all four lanes all the way over and including the traffic signal at Morris Dido. And then up here on Bonds Ranch Road, we'd like them to construct the southern two lanes of, of that up to where the, the high school completed the work here. And then, obviously, they would construct the internal roads and other infrastructure as well.
If they were doing the constructing, will it be a requirement to have those arterials included in the MTP?
So, they are in the MTP today.
They're already.
So, they're having to build it in accordance with the MTP. That's right. Yep. That's right.
Next, Alan.
Dana, just for clarification, these properties are in the ETJ. They won't be in the city for 20 to 30 years. So, we will not be providing police, fire, EMS services in those areas, correct?
So, for everything north of Bonds Ranch Road, correct. For this property that I happen to be showing, you know, on the screen right now, that's south of Bonds Ranch, that's already in our city limits. We're already serving that area in those two subdivisions that exist today. But you're correct. We would not be providing public safety services for the ones to the north. I'll go back real quick.
So, my question would be, with these properties that are in the ETJ, are we ensuring that adequate space is reserved for community facilities, for police, fire, and, and others?
Yes. Yeah. So, that's the proposal here on number two, which is PMB. They're the ones who, let me get, get to their plan. On the south, you'll see in red where they've, they've indicated a site for, for a community facility. They've indicated it for emergency services, but it would be something we could work with them on if that's the, if that's the, the right use for that property. But I believe it's, it's seven acres, so it would actually have enough room to do a couple of different things potentially.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? No. Thank you, Dana.
All right. Thank you all.
Council, our last presentation is an update on West Side TIF. Michael Henning, Economic Development Manager, will walk us through the presentation. Hi, Michael.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So, Michael Henning, Economic Development Department. I know you've got a busy day, so I'm going to do my best to be brief. But we did want to provide you with an overview of a proposed new TIF on what we are generally referring to as the near, near west side. So, really, what we're talking about here is the area that is immediately west of the central business districts of downtown, on, over to, toward the direction of the cultural district. And just a little bit of background, so naturally, that area has seen, certain areas that have seen fairly significant development over the past 10 to 20 years, namely, the properties along West 7th, Montgomery Plaza, Left Bank. However, there are certain sub-districts in the area that we're looking at that have not seen a significant level of investment or development, and it's largely the result of certain inadequate infrastructure and stormwater issues. So, that really is hammering home on a day like today. So, in looking at the near-term horizon, there are several major projects that we see as being possible that really create the right mix of, of ingredients to begin to consider the possible use of a new TIF to be able to address some of those infrastructure challenges. That would then allow us to actually support that new development in the first place. So, in other words, finding a way to ensure that growth is able to finance growth. Separately, Farrington Field is also an area that is also a property that has long been the, the target of discussion as to how we can ensure that it is preserved and remaining an active part of the fabric of that part of, of Fort Worth. And so, in taking a look at the potential use of a TIF district to support that area, there's an opportunity to secure participation by Fort Worth ISD to help us in that effort to, to preserve that historic asset. So, I want to draw in a little more specifically on the question, on the issue of stormwater. So, as you can see here on this map, particularly within the, the subject area that we're looking at, which is that area within the white boundary, you can see just the severity of stormwater issues that really are riddled throughout that particular district. And it doesn't take much of a stretch of an imagination to understand how that impacts our ability to secure new development within those areas, especially of the kind of development that we would want to bring to this area of Fort Worth. Of course, that, that infrastructure is costly, which is largely the reason why it hasn't been addressed to this point. I mentioned Farrington Field. Again, the, the historic nature of that property is important to the broader surrounding district. But as, I believe everybody here is already familiar, that is a costly issue to, to contend with, and there's been a lot of discussion over the years as to best, as to the best way of addressing those costs, and we'll dig into that in a little more detail here in a moment. But really, as the ISD has evaluated what realistic options there are to address the preservation and continued activation of Farrington Field, you could really boil it down to three main possible scenarios. So, the first is, in some ways, I suppose, the easiest, you simply do nothing, right? That would not require any immediate cost on the part of the ISD or on the part of the city. However, obviously, that would not lead to the long-term preservation of, of the property. And so, you, what you would end up seeing is long-term decay, which eventually would result in costs down the road likely for the demolition of that property. The ISD has estimated the cost of demolition in today's dollars of being roughly $10 to $15 million. That is obviously not an outcome that we would, that we would prefer. The second alternative would be to address strictly those repairs that are necessary for the stadium itself, so namely, bringing it up to ADA compliance and addressing really the most critical repairs that are necessary to be able to keep the, keep the stadium functioning and to be able to ensure its long-term preservation. However, the question has always been, where, where does that money come from, right? So, $25 million is a big-ticket item for the ISD to be able to address. There have been attempts in the past to seek a, a bond referendum to be able to support that expense. That had not been successful. And so, really, that leaves you with the only other likely scenario being this third scenario, which would be finding a way to, to secure adjacent mixed-use development or some others, some, some other form of development and investment that can create new incremental revenue that can help to support and finance these improvements. So, in taking a look at that specifically, the ISD has estimated that over a 20-year time other form of development and investment that can create new incremental revenue that can help to support and finance these improvements. So in taking a look at that specifically, the ISD has estimated that over a 20-year time period, by utilizing some of the property that is located there, immediately surrounding the stadium structure itself, could allow the property to effectively self-finance the repairs that are necessary at the stadium itself. So just to join that to a little more detail. So as I mentioned, there is property that is immediately surrounding the stadium that is currently developable today. If we are able to find a way to support compatible and complementary mixed-use development, we believe that there is the opportunity to be able to support approximately $350 million worth of new adjacent development. That new development would result in approximately $55 million of funding that could address the stadium improvements that are necessary. Through the proposed participation that we are outlining here today, there is a way of supporting the improvements to the stadium while still ensuring that the school district is not having to rely on other taxpayers and can really source the resources for that effort from the property itself. And through the creation of a TIF, the other participants, the other public partners involved in that effort could net what would be estimated as being approximately $4.1 million of net new revenue to those partners. So I want to talk about the proposed TIF. So you can see what is being proposed is that area that is outlined and shaded in blue. The district to the right of that, the area shaded in green, is the existing Trinity River Vision TIF. So we're talking about that area that is largely bounded by, or I suppose anchored by White Settlement Road toward the north, and then toward the south, the portion around Farrington Field. You'll note that there are certain areas that have not been included, and that is primarily those properties that are around Folk Street and the West 7th District, as well as Montgomery Plaza. And that's largely because those areas have already been developed and many of the infrastructure needs in that area have been addressed. And we really want to put the focus of this new proposed TIF on those areas that need the infrastructure work. Taking a look at the long-term financial projections associated with that district, we took a look at a proposed 20-year term. And then we modeled what growth could look like assuming 4% annual growth among appraisals within that district. That's a reasonably conservative assumption, given the fact that what we've seen in other surrounding districts has exceeded 6% on average. We've also baked into our modeling the anticipated investment of several projects that we expect within the area over the course of the next several years. So those projections can really be better understood by taking a look at this graph, which shows you just how much potential there is to be able to generate new tax revenue by securing new development, by finding the way to finance and address the infrastructure issues within this district that are preventing that development from occurring today. So what the city is proposing would be that the city participate at a rate of 50% within that district. We're still within early stages here, but we are in early conversations with the other taxing entities that we would hope would participate in this. We're proposing that that include Tarrant County at a rate of 35%, as well as Tarrant County College District and the Tarrant Regional Water District, also participating at a proposed rate of 35%. Again, that is subject to their approval of their participation within this proposed TIF district. And then finally, you can see here that we are proposing and have been in the active conversations with Fort Worth ISD, seeking their participation in this proposed TIF district at a rate of 35%. The fact that this TIF would involve a school facility enables Fort Worth ISD to be able to participate in the first place. Looking specifically to the city and Fort Worth ISD, those two entities that at this point have been in kind of the deepest level of conversations about this proposed TIF, you can see that in initial years, the amount of incremental revenue is reasonably modest, approximately $81,000 in the first year from the city and $66,000 from Fort Worth ISD. But that grows very substantially over time as new development takes root within the district. And so over the course of the proposed 20 years, you can see that the city is projected to be able to generate from this district approximately $147 million through its 50% participation rate, with the ISD participating at a proposed not-to-exceed of $25 million on a net present value basis, which we're estimating as being approximately $30 million over the 20-year period. If we were able to be successful in securing the participation of our partners through the county, the water district, and TCC, you can see that we will be able to support a much broader set of issues within the district through the projected generation of approximately $237 million to be able to tackle some of these public improvements. Now again, we are not recommending that any entity participate at a full 100% of the increment within this district. And so the remaining portion that these entities are not contributing to the TIF would be retained and would continue to go to fund their ordinary operations. So in this particular case, we are projecting that this proposed TIF would result in over $783 million of retained revenue to the entities that are proposed for participation. And taking a look at the specific areas where we anticipate putting those dollars to work, you can see here, we've outlined the broad categories for potential TIF projects. And again, these are primarily focused on basic infrastructure improvements within this district, approximately $70 million anticipated for road and streetscape improvements, $50 million for stormwater and flood control improvements, and so on. And then of course, you can see, we are currently estimating approximately $55 million to address the issues that are necessary to be able to support not just the immediate needs of Farrington Field, but also to be able to support its long-term activation. If we are assuming only the city and the school district were to be participating, you can see exactly how much of those costs would be able to be supported by their participation. However, if we are able to be successful in securing the participation by the county, TCC, and the water district, you can see that we are able to address a broader set of improvements specifically within the area of road and streetscape improvements. So in taking a look at the proposed next steps for this proposed new TIF district, we are currently anticipating that we would bring this forward for council consideration at the June 10th meeting. At that same meeting, as part of that action, the council would establish and create the TIF board and appoint a chair. And then we would use the remaining months, likely over the course of the summer, to secure the participation of the other proposed entities. And then based on how that looks and our creation of that TIF board meeting, that initial TIF board, we would then turn to the first TIF board meeting to be able to consider initial action by that board to support initial projects. Again, anticipated that would occur over the summer on into the fall. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Michael. Councilwoman Rehill?
Michael, will you go back to the very first slide? You're going to be patient with me, I have lots of questions. Okay. Actually, go to the stormwater, yes. Okay. So will the TIF impact Arlington Heights? And how does the stormwater issue there, will this positively impact what's happening and the planning for that area?
So I don't know that I can speak to some of the downstream impacts of Arlington Heights, except inasmuch as this is fairly significantly east of Arlington Heights. So I don't know that that would necessarily have that.
I believe that Arlington Heights is a different system. It moves actually toward 30 and not to Lynnwood.
Can we get clarification on that from Jennifer?
We can.
Okay. That'd be helpful.
It's more West 7th, or 7th and Camp Bowie goes this way, but Arlington Heights goes south.
Isn't that Arlington Heights right there, that big blob that we're looking at? Or is it farther?
No, it's to the east. It's right to the west on the map.
Arlington Heights.
That blob right there, yeah. Okay, yeah, if we could get clarification from Jennifer Dyke and stormwater, that'd be helpful. Okay, will you go to the proposed TIF map, the blue and green one? Okay. So really, I want to talk about boundaries. So how are the boundaries determined?
Yes, so they were determined by focusing on the areas of most significant need from an infrastructure standpoint. Again, focusing on those public improvements that we do anticipate utilizing this TIF to help support. So as you can see, this aligns pretty well around that focused area where those stormwater issues are that we anticipate needing to address as well as Farrington Field. And then beyond that, there are certain statutory requirements that we need to make sure that we're considering as well, such as the amount of residential that is captured within the proposed district.
And this would include the new Lark Spur development, correct?
It would.
Okay. And how does that work? Would that, would this negatively, positively impact their development project? And have they been at the table in conversations with this?
Yes, that is factored into our conversations and our consideration for that and other future development in that area. So for any significant development along the northern portion of the district to be able to be facilitated, there's fairly significant infrastructure work that needs to be done. And so our proposal is to be able to utilize this TIF in part to be able to help address those issues, whether it be for that specific project or for others that may evolve over time.
Since their project's already established, I just don't want to do anything to jeopardize that project in any way.
Absolutely not.
Okay. All right. Keep going. Hold on. Okay, the proposed TIF participation. Oops, sorry, Elizabeth, you've got a question. Do you want to go back? Okay, how are the participation rates determined?
Yes, so we've really focused here in this particular TIF on a few different things. One is taking a look at the long-term needs that we need to finance, right? So it's the question of, what public improvements over a 20-year span do we think that can and should be tackled? And what is necessary for us to be able to finance that? We feel that these participation rates are sufficient to be able to do so. We also want to make sure that we, in recognizing the growth potential of this area, are still leaving increment for the city and for the county and others to be able to enjoy the benefits of, right, as growth occurs over time, to be able to support general fund growth. So what we have found is that a participation rate for a district like this of 50% by the city gives us flexibility on the use of certain other tools that we might be able to, that we might need to be able to support new development, like for instance, a tax payment or Chapter 380 agreement to support new intense mixed-use development, without, again, utilizing the full increment that a given development might generate. And then in the case of the other entities, again, we're prioritizing what is necessary for us to be able to ensure adequate cash flow to really be able to tackle some of these public improvements while still ensuring that they are able to benefit from some of the long-term growth.
Okay. I guess my question's more around Fort Worth ISD, since they own Farrington Field and they're at a lower amount than the city, I just want to be able to reconcile that.
Yes. So.
They have a higher tax rate. So their tax rate is higher. And so, and the portion of the dollars they're using would be going to their facility. And so that covers the amount, the difference in the facility.
I guess how is the 35% determined though?
By calculating the amount that was needed to do the Farrington Field piece.
Okay. And then where are we in conversations with Tarrant County and Fort Worth ISD?
So we have had conversations with staff. I would say that we're still early on in those conversations. And we would anticipate bringing something before county commissioners court for consideration over the summer or early fall.
Okay. And then my last question's on Slide 14. And I just want to be clear, if we're doing this for stormwater, I just, the road and streetscape improvements, I just want to make sure we're balancing out the funds right. So I think that needs to be very clear from the very beginning, that if it's a stormwater project, let's make sure that the allocation is correct from the outset. And then the process, the asterisk below, projects that may be subject to certain negotiated private development commitments, walk me through this process. And knowing that Fort Worth ISD and the Fort Worth Stock Show and Rodeo have a probably informal agreement to use the parking during the stock show, I kind of, when I would answer my first question, just kind of walk me through that process and how that would be selected. And then two, how do we protect the entities that are currently using Farrington Field and the surrounding acreage? And we don't want to damage any of them too. So I just want to make that clear.
So let me actually address the question of parking first, right? So we have not assumed any development whatsoever that would occur on the larger parking lot that is being utilized currently for support of the stock show, right? So really, anything that is east of Trail Drive. So recognizing that there is that long-term need. Now, could there be opportunities for future parking improvements? Possibly, but that's not something that we've really jumped into this conversation, assuming. To your other question about how do we utilize these funds to be able to secure new development, or how might we make some of these projects subject to negotiated commitments? So ordinarily, when we take a look at a TIF like this, we really look for opportunities to be able to leverage some of the investments that the city and its partners would be making into the area to secure development that either would not happen at all or would not happen within a near-term time horizon, to be able to help facilitate that investment, right? And so that's an opportunity for us to be able to negotiate a higher level of investment, a higher quality of development, and to be able to address other things that we would want to achieve within that district. And so historically, what the city of Fort Worth has been able to achieve has been a ratio in excess of 10 to 1 of private dollars to city or TIF dollars. And so it's an opportunity for us to be able to put these proposed project costs to work in a way that secures commitments on the other side by private developers.
Since the city has a higher level of participation than the other entities, does that provide the city to kind of dictate what that partnership looks like? Or would Fort Worth ISD have a say in that?
If I can answer that. So the, any kind of, any agreements that go forward once the TIF is created will be the TIF board and the city council. Each of the participating entities gets one member on the board, and the city council appoints the rest of them. And typically, it's two council members or the chair and vice chair of that board. So in this case, this district is within District 7 and District 9. I would assume it would be the two of y'all that would be on the board, and then the city council then appoints the rest of the seats. So it's typically, a majority of the board is made up of city appointees.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you, Michael.
Councilwoman Reback. All right. I too have a lot of questions about this particular TIF. First, if you can go to the slide with the, Slide 7, the boundaries. TIFs are probably one of our single greatest tools that we have in this city to encourage and spur redevelopment. It's why we're talking about this for this area right now. I cannot fathom why we have carved out the West 7th Bar District and we are not giving ourselves the opportunity to use this tool in an area of town, a very specific area of town, that we are working so hard to redevelop. I think it's unfair to say that West 7th has been redeveloped. You have bars in old automotive shops. Those buildings haven't been redeveloped, they've just been repurposed. And so I'd like to see the boundaries of this particular TIF include the West 7th Entertainment District. There's still stormwater issues there, there's still redevelopment to be had. And with its proximity to Farrington Field, I think it's short-sighted to not include it in the first place. So that would be my one comment on the boundaries, is that they need to be amended to include that West 7th area as part of that, so that we're not handicapping ourselves for future redevelopment. Next, my, I also share some questions and concern about participation in the city versus the other taxing entities. Because I wasn't here when we created, you know, the downtown or the near Southside TIFs. Can you tell me if these percentages, the 55, the 35s, are those pretty standard in our other TIFs? Do we see less participation? I know some of them had caps, like near Southside, the county had a cap. But this 50% and the 35%, is that pretty standard for what? But this 50% and the 35%, is that pretty standard for what we've seen in other TIFs as well?
So Councilmember, these rates are actually identical to the current downtown and Lancaster TIF participation rates.
Today?
Today.
What about our other TIFs? Do you know?
I would say they, these largely resemble what we have for the Stockyards TIF as well.
Okay. I just was curious as to where they are in, in relation to our other TIFs, so thank you for that. Next, I want to talk about the, well, let's go to revenue. So the city of Fort Worth is putting a lot into this project, but it seems like our other partners are, are receiving greater benefit. And let me be clear, I want to do anything that's going to help shore up the finances of Fort Worth ISD. I think that this is a rare instance where the city can truly do something that helps the, the school district, and so that is not lost on me. But it seems to me like the city of Fort Worth is putting in a whole lot, but our other partners are receiving greater benefit, if I read these charts correctly. So can we, can we talk about that? Am I incorrect in reading those charts? Or am I correct in reading those charts?
I'm happy to chime in. So Stormwater is typically a city issue, and so getting the other entities that don't do Stormwater to participate in a TIF that's going to tackle Stormwater and streets is typically the tough job. And so the hope here is that you get the other entities to participate, so we can leverage our funds with their funds, so that we, our projects can go further than they otherwise would. Or we'd be moving forward, if we were going to address Stormwater in that area with only city funds, if there was no TIF and they didn't participate. So at the end of the day, the city will collect 50% of the increment created, they'll create a, they'll, they'll, they get a larger amount. Traditionally, in these TIFs, the other entities have not participated at the same level as the city. They just won't, because it's a city-driven incentive tool or redevelopment tool. And so if you look at the other TIFs, traditionally, the city's at one level, and all the other entities are at a lower level, in order to get them to participate. But that's really, the driver in this one, is that we're looking for infrastructure projects that are typically city, that would be city-only type of projects. And to get them to participate, the idea is that if they do participate, then we might have, we'll repair these issues, we'll have, because we repair these issues, we'll have more development, higher dense development, more value development, and so they get a benefit from it. So that's the incentive for them to participate at the level we've had.
Well, their incentive is their tax, taxable base goes up. As ours goes up, theirs goes up, and we all mutually benefit, correct?
Correct, but just in our discussions with those entities in the past, they say, why should we work on Stormwater? That's a city issue.
I hear that, but that's asking us to be proactive when other entities are maybe being a little short-sighted.
Then we wouldn't, we wouldn't create, I think, with the ISD interested in participating, before, we hadn't gone forward with a TIF in the past, because there was no other entities that wanted to participate, because it was, Stormwater is a city issue.
Sure, and I'm glad you brought up Stormwater, because we keep talking about Stormwater, and Councilwoman Hill brought it up, and you brought it up, I brought it up. This TIF, or the creation of this TIF, is not something new. It's something that I've talked about for several years now, specific to it being a tool to address our really severe Stormwater issues in that area.
I agree with you, I think his Stormwater dollars need to be at that.
Right, and so I'm looking at this, and I, tell me, because I also have some concern with the potential TIF project, can you give me some ideas on what the public safety improvements would be, from type, types of projects?
Yes, I can run the game from the street lighting and crosswalks and other things that are at the street level to be able to ensure public, public safety from an infrastructure standpoint. That would not extend to the hiring of security or anything of that nature, if that's what the question is. That's the type of thing that we would have to find through our general fund, or possibly through a public improvement district or something of that kind. But this would primarily be focused on art of a structure that has a public safety element to it, such as, again, crosswalks, public lighting, things of that nature.
It just, the breakdown of this doesn't feel like we're addressing Stormwater. I mean, the Linwood project alone is a $150 million Stormwater project, and so if, and that's just one portion of that. Can you go back to the Stormwater map, please? And that's just one portion of what is a really significant issue. And so $50 million doesn't do anything to, to realistically address the Stormwater issue in the area. So if we're building this TIF to do that, then let's make sure that TIF does that.
Right, this is just a preliminary. We'll be coming back to the city council in June with the actual preliminary project and finance plan. These numbers will be readjusted to be focused more on Stormwater. And then ultimately, the council would adopt the actual TIF project and finance plan.
Sure.
Later in the year.
Well, as the TIF board is created, because the TIF is the one that would put that together, correct?
The TIF board, in, in June is the idea, is you create the preliminary, you approve it to create the preliminary and appoint the TIF board, and then you move forward from there.
Okay. I'd like to see some movement in these, I understand their potential and they're hypothetical, but I'd like to see some real movement in that. This does not feel equitable for the city of Fort Worth as it stands right now, and I would like to see the boundary change, so that we're including the West 7th Entertainment District.
I think what I was told is that because the West 7th is redeveloped under the state law, it has to be blighted and not developed areas to fit into a TIF. That's why I went around it. But we can check that with law, again, make sure that's, that's the case. That's what I was told by these boundaries were created. Legally, you can only create a, a TIF in an area that's blighted or has specific issues that have to be addressed for it to redevelop. Since that area is basically, you have new buildings, you have all of those warehouses and all that have been converted and used, there's economic activity. That's what I was told, it didn't meet the requirement of state law.
Do you know if, we can look into it, does sales tax and property tax values have anything to do with whether or not it qualifies to the district?
I don't know if it's that specific, but for instance, when the downtown, there was 60% of the downtown buildings were vacant.
Yeah.
Either way, I think it's worth pursuing it, to Councilwoman Rebecca's point.
Just to put a kind of pin in that, you know, when you looked at the Goldenrod project as it was coming through, they're in that zone of, of bar districts, and they had to move their building back 10 feet, because Stormwater was such an issue there. So I would argue that on Stormwater alone, we should be able to create that TIF to, to build that, because it's an economic development issue.
Leg, I actually support that. I was told legally we couldn't, so we can look at it again.
Thank you, Leanne, I appreciate that. And that's all I've got.
Go back to the slide that Councilwoman Rebecca was asking about, the bar graph. Thank you, Michael. That one. Just for my own clarification, Councilwoman Rebecca, when you look at this and you look at projects versus participation, you know, when I see Stormwater, road and streetscape, and parking improvements to some extent, I think of the city in that realm, but I was just trying to dig in on what you were alluding to. Who do you feel like would not be participating to the extent that they really should be?
Well, I think when you go to the revenues, when you look at what the city of Fort Worth puts in and what the city of Fort Worth gets out, versus what the other city or the other taxing entities put in, and then that value that they get out, it seems like we're putting in a great deal, and we're getting a great deal, but not to the same extent that our other partners are putting in less and seem to be receiving a greater proportional benefit.
So like on this particular slide, they've got it, so school district, it says here is 31 million versus, you know, if you go across, I'm just trying to, so I understand, if you look at Farrington Field, as in yellow, is it 55? In your mind, that's, they're not participating to an extent that would make sense, because of the much, the project cost that they're going to be getting?
No, I think this is probably not the best graph to look at. I think the other one that's got revenues and...
So the amount that we have, the cities all collect.
Yes.
This one?
Yeah.
The next one.
The other one, yeah, 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 the...
No, to the, to the taxing entities, the total, to the taxing. The amount that's actually net, okay. So, this retained.
Yes. And you see how, when you look at the, like, the overall benefit, I didn't do hard math on here, but we're putting in a lot. When you look at what other folks are putting in in the benefit...
But when you say a lot of folks, you mean Fort Worth ISD?
No, I mean, Tarrant County, TCC, TRWD, I mean, everyone's receiving a net benefit. And so the proportion of the net benefit that the city of Fort Worth receives is...
We would receive 50% of all the taxes during that timeframe, while they all receive 65%.
Right.
Because it's just a difference of that percentage. I, I can tell you 100, almost 100% sure, that they will never put in the exact same amount we have.
And I don't know that they need to, I'm not saying...
Right, and so that's why that's the differentiate that we have between the two.
It's my job to make sure we're doing right by our taxpayers. And so I go back to my statement, that I want to do what we can to help the Fort Worth ISD be as financially solvent as possible. And so I want to be, you know, Scrooge McDuck in that, in that sense, but I do want to make sure that we're advocating for city taxpayers in this.
Something else you, I don't think was mentioned, is that Farrington is not on the tax rolls now, this would put it back on the tax rolls, right?
Exactly, so the, the city's participation in anything in Farrington would be, only be coming from taxes created by Farrington. And we would collect from that development, and the city would collect 50% of those taxes that it's not collecting, it's collecting zero.
Hey, will you clarify, sorry, are you talking about sales tax revenue? What are you talking about, we used to talk about?
Just, just the property.
Because we don't own the property, it's still going to be Fort Worth ISD-owned, right?
All, all sales tax would, comes to the city anyway. But property tax currently, that property is tax exempt, so we collect $0. If a $350 million development goes on a long Farrington Field, that's going to create an increment to help redo Farrington, the city would now collect 50% of that new property tax value that comes off that property. It would not be exempt.
Yeah, I don't know, okay, sorry, Jay. Sorry to harp on it, I just want to understand, make sure I'm clear in my mind. Fort Worth ISD would still own the property, correct?
Fort Worth ISD will own the property, the idea is that they would lease the property so that a development could occur there, it'd be a long-term lease. But the actual development, the private development that goes on there would be taxable.
Got it, okay. So once it's leased, then, okay.
At least that becomes taxable. The, the field itself is going to be owned by, by the ISD, so that's not going to be taxable, but the $350 million investment that's adjacent to...
That's the clarification I was looking for, so the field itself would stay the same, tax exempt, but any development around it then would be taxable?
Exactly. And currently, there's no proposal, as Michael said, to, to develop on the parking lot site that is to the east. That itself has a lot of Stormwater issues, so you'd be done to develop on that.
Thank you for clarifying.
Mayor, one question?
Yes.
Thank you. Michael, thanks for this presentation. I'm just, I know we've been working on this for several years in, in one form or another. Seems like we're getting a lot of momentum on this around. A timeline would have been helpful, not, no judgment or anything like that, but he probably does, and we're prob, I'm probably ahead of you, but can you give me kind of the history of like, you know, where, when we started picking up momentum again on this project, and then what's the next steps in terms of timeline for any decisions from council, in terms of, you know, council actions?
Right, well, again, it's a question of how far back do you really want to go? Because we've been looking at it for quite some time, right?
From the, from the beginning of this proposal to now, like, don't go way back to like, however far back this started.
I would say over the past two years in particular, we've really taken a much harder look at, at the potential for utilizing a TIF in this district, in this area, to be able to address these issues. We've taken a look at a TIF off and on over really the past 10-plus years. And as I said at the outset, you really need the right mix of ingredients for a TIF to make sense. And namely, you need to have a reasonable degree of confidence that there's going to be a significant amount of, of new development and investment within a reasonably short time horizon, so three, five, seven years, right? To be able to generate the kind of increment that you need to be able to support the kinds of public improvements we're talking about. So when we've looked at this in the past, there had always been this, this question as to whether or not there is enough interest in this part of town, particularly within these sub-districts, to be able to support that level of investment and be able to generate this kind of increment. I think now we sit in a much better position to, to have that confidence.
Great, and just one follow-up, what, what shifted between now and kind of, we're making obviously great progress, but what shifted from the two years ago to now that helped us bring it to this point?
So I would point to two key things. I think that, for one, actually, three. One, there's been a lot of success, not just within this district, but within surrounding areas, in terms of new, new development in those areas that are more easily developed, so namely, there around the cultural district, the Crescent Development, I think is a good example of something that has been a momentum builder for the broader near West Side area of Fort Worth. The other two things I would really point to would be some of these more recent conversations we've been having with the ISD around some viable opportunities to be able to activate and, and preserve Farrington Field over the long term, through the, the development of some of these unused parcels that have been leased around the Farrington Field Stadium. And then the, the other one I would point to would be the number of, of properties that have come, that have become available and are now in position to be developed, primarily along White Settlement Road, right? And some of that is spurred by the relocation of the Audubon properties, the, the closure of Fort Worth ISD's administration building, right? I think would be another one. So really, there's, there's a better set of circumstances to be able to support immediate term development on that area, which gives us confidence that, yes, the increment will be there to be able to utilize this tool.
Right, that's helpful, and, you know, I've, I've always personally been supportive of, of TIFs and to some degree PIDs. And obviously, with Fort Worth ISD being a partner in this, I certainly see the innovation that's probably needed in something like this, given the constraints on public education, particularly public school funding. And so certainly understand that aspect as well. Kind of broader conversation that will far exceed my time here, but I think TIFs obviously are a really strong tool to be able to help in revitalization of our neighborhoods all across the city, especially those outside the loop. And so I think, you know, the creativity here is awesome, and it just continues to encourage as the next council takes on its roles, and the councils after that, that we continue to look at ways to do this in our, in our neighborhoods that really need much-needed investment and revitalization.
Any other questions? No? Okay, a few maybe to-dos after this, Michael, for you and your team, that I heard around the table. One is to research and come back to us on whether or not you can include West 7th, Leanne, into the TIF, and if there's any reason why you can't put that back in. Two is, based on some commentary today from Councilwoman Moore-Hill and Councilwoman Rebecca, I'm thinking, I'll just throw these out here, and we can talk more about this as we get closer to June, but really thinking strategically about who's on that TIF board will be really important, I think. Both D9 and D7 needing to be represented there on the TIF board, of course, and then possibly Fort Worth Stock Show and Rodeo, and then maybe Linwood or representation there, we can talk more about that. And then, of course, if you include West 7th, making sure that they have a seat at the table, and then you also, what's the name of the property? Larkspur, yeah? Larkspur as well, we can work through that, just throwing those ideas out there, people I know that need to be at the table.
I think a neighborhood would be a good idea, and probably the West 7th Neighborhood Alliance would be the best avenue, because it...
Pulls all that in together, okay. And then looking at this timeline, MNC and public hearing, so in whatever forum, Jay, it works best, Leanne, to come back to the body and give those updates, and needed, needed there, and it sounds like you're going to have more project delineation by then, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, perfect, that's all. Yes, Councilwoman Hill?
On the Stormwater front, if you can work with Stormwater on, if you grant exactly how that's, this is going to impact them positively, what neighborhoods and the outcome we're expecting?
Yeah, because they have a list of priority projects and have forever, of the hundreds of millions of dollars of unfunded projects that they have, so, yeah. Okay, great, thank you, Michael, we appreciate you. Council, that's the conclusion of our presentations today, I can move to upcoming agenda items.
I have one.
Yes, Gina?
I know that's a shock, and it's about TIFs. Before Robert Stern's left office, he and I had talked about the need to put the newly-elected president of the Woodhaven Neighborhood Association on the Woodhaven TIF. It turns out, we thought we had it worked out, but then Robert left. Well, working with staff, we had a configuration, but got a new ACM assigned, and turned out legal got involved, so nothing happened. I do need to make sure there is some, there is some type of structure involved, because the Woodhaven TIF had been pretty much comprised of people who might just have lived in Woodhaven, and in the case of the outgoing president, she just happened to be there. So I think Jay knows this story, Jessica knows this story. It could easily be swept under the staff rug, but it needs to be in the open that this has not happened. What makes it odd is the TIF board members are appointed every two years. Neighborhood leaders are elected... Neighborhood leaders are elected once a year. And so there's a need to have maybe a consistency by keeping the outgoing president on there in some kind of role. But I think I've made enough noise about that. They know what they need to do, but it needs to be addressed, and I'll share it with my successor as well.
Any future, yes, Jared?
Thank you, Mayor. I know Councilmember Lowersdorf and myself had asked for an informal report about honoring our marshals and working to help them become civil service. Obviously, they protect us in so many ways here at City Hall and all across the city. And so nonetheless, absolutely 1,000% supported, and we haven't received an update yet. And again, my time is running short, so I would like that report sooner than later. So I don't know where it's stuck or if it's stuck, but I would like to surely be a part of that discussion.
So that issue has a big budgetary impact, so we're going to bring it forward in the budget update. And so we'll try to see if we can get it ready for the next budget update.
Yes, sir. Thank you, my friend.
Any other? Yes, Councilwoman Rebecca.
I'd like an IR on travel spent by department to include mayor and council as well, to make sure that we have a handle on what we're spending at the city in light of recent Fort Worth reports about our travel. I think we just owe it to take a look at it. Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a couple. Excuse me. I think we talked about this before, a few years ago, but an update on our city alleys. I have quite a bit of them in the Morningside area and are grossly over, out of whack. And so what the city is doing to take care of our alleys. Also, sorry. It's on this one. Also, an office, a district office in our community. And so even if there's a city facility or a community building where we can have a representation within our community and not just at City Hall. So I don't know, that may be a budget item as well, or maybe not. If we had a local facility, we might not have to use any funds. And then, I'm kind of, I'm not having, well, I am kind of having an issue with discretion with code compliance, and so illegal fencing or illegal building of, so we have a fence that's illegally built, and the officer's given the discretion to let the person go to zoning. I'm not going to approve it. And so we're not moving fast enough. I want to know what our policy says when something is built illegally and it needs to be taken down, even if they're going to go through the process. And so I think we're not evenly matched around the City of Fort Worth. So I want a presentation on that. And I can explain further with whoever you put over that.
We'll follow up with that.
Anyone else?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't care. I'm leaving. But to.
This is the future agenda items, Gina.
Just to bird-dog on what Councilmembers Nettles just mentioned, I think there needs to be a report on just how far discretionary authorities go with city staffers. And so we've been able to wipe that out when it comes to trees, but, you know, we don't need people walking around here willy-nilly deciding on what they can and cannot do. So there needs to be transparency on just who can do what and to what extent. Are you okay with that?
Anyone else?
Can we stick to code, at least? That would be very wide-ranging. We just.
And just, yeah. Okay. Any other items?
I just have one question. I saw that the sworn in was supposed to be at 5:30, but then there was a calendar sent out for 5 o'clock. Is there, it's going to be at 5 and not 5:30? Okay.
That's next week.
We were worried about the amount of time it was going to take.
But it's 5.
They were afraid you were going to talk too long?
The person is Jared, but he won't be talking this Tuesday.
I won't give a speech till June, so.
I know, that's why.
That was his, you missed it.
I'm giving my speech next Tuesday. They want me to do it here with this audience?
No, we're going to do it.
I'm bringing my friends here. 5:30.
Yes. 5. We'll send out a reminder. Whitney is wrangling the cats. She's in charge. Okay. Excellent. We'll close the meeting. But Chris, we could get you like a Girl Scout table, you know, in front of the community centers, like representing District 8, if you want an office there. The Girl Scouts do well. You might have to sell cookies or something for them to come visit with you. I don't know. We could try it. All teasing. Okay. Meeting adjourned.